All right, everybody. Thank you for coming to the Selectman's Meeting on Thursday, March 14th, 2024. Looks like we got a full house. Call a meeting to order tonight at 7:00 PM. Does everyone in the audience just try it down so we can have... We're starting the meeting now, guys. You didn't bring a gavel.
My gavel is on, I'm sure.
There we go. There we go. All right, first up, we have a roll call. We have Kevin Snyder is on Zoom. He's out of town tonight. I don't think Meg's going to be able to join us. We also have Denise, Alec, myself, and town manager Mike Unis. So right up, first, we have a pledge of allegiance. Maybe it's all right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, right off the bat, we have some appointments and reservations. There's an appointment of Paxton Hallisle to the open space meeting. No, I don't think so. Paxton's not here, right?
I just want to say the committee's been very active and doing a lot of good things, developing a plan for us and looking forward to his participation with us.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion to appoint Paxton Hallisle to the open space meeting.
Second. Since Kevin is on Zoom, we have to do a roll call. Kevin?
You're welcome for slowing everything down.
I'm still going to rapid fire this. We're going to get it on. Denise? Oh, sorry, Kevin.
I will vote yes on Paxton's appointment.
All right, Denise?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you, Paxton. Next up, we have an appointment of Robert Kimble to the permanent building committee. Apparently, that needs to be a joint meeting, so we're going to postpone that until, I believe, our next meeting. And we'll have a joint meeting on that. And we have a reappointment of Dorothy McGowan as the Democratic member to the Board of Registries.
Dorothy here?
I don't think that is her.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Dorothy McGowan as a Democratic member of the Board of Registries.
Second. Okay, Kevin?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right, thank you, Dorothy. And now we have minutes for February 29th, 2024. Does everybody have a chance to look these over?
Yes.
Any changes, corrections? Kevin, I'm not going to forget about you, so if you have anything, just jump in.
Okay, yeah, I'm good.
All right. Okay, so without any changes, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 29th, 2024.
Motion and second. Kevin?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We don't have any licenses or permits tonight. We do some announcements.
Yep. First one is, we want to recognize the town clerk's office and her team on the recent primary election. OSHA and everybody involved. They were also on CNN. At least, they were recognized by CNN. They were... We were the first town in Massachusetts that repolled. So thank you very much to everybody involved with that. We also have community, excuse me, community dinner at the Trinitarian Congregational Church at Tupine Street, Norton Mass, Tuesday, March 19th, from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. There's live music and activities for children. Obviously, the marchman uses baytam mashed potato coleslaw. It's at the Trinitarian Congregational Church, Tuesday, March 19th, 5:00 to 6:30 PM. And in April, the Norton Community Lions for the Annual Indoor Spring Market at St. Mary's, One Powell Street. That's Saturday, April 13th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There's local vendors with all kinds of stuff. That's pretty much it. Is that all?
Yes, that's it. Okay, we're onto new business, and we have an update on the Elm Street sewer improvement project. Do we have some folks here?
Yes.
This is my spot.
Yeah.
Yep, we're in.
So, good evening. My name is Steve Peterson. I'm with Weston and Sampson Engineers, where the design engineers for the water and sewer department in Norton. So here with me tonight, I have Ryan Henry from my office, also from Weston and Sampson. We have Frank Fornia, the superintendent. And we have two members of the commission, James Jordan and Steve Bernstein, are also here today. So we're here tonight, yep. Too far here. There we go. It's probably that way. So we're here tonight to talk about the Elm Street Sewer and Water Expansion Project. So might be the next slide. So just as an overview of what we're going to cover tonight, I'll start with an overview of the project and some of the background, some of the details of what we're talking about in terms of that infrastructure project. You know, one of the main reasons we're here tonight is because we've put forth an article, a warrant article, for town meeting, so we want to talk about that. And with any town meeting article comes a discussion of how much is it going to cost and how are we going to pay for it? So we want to talk about the anticipated costs of the project and the options that we're looking at to reduce those costs. And then we'll just give you a, you know, final update of where we're at with the design and what the next steps are in the process. That's kind of what we're going to cover tonight. And we can, I can take questions as we go. When we try and get all the way through, ask questions at the end, whatever works for you guys. So just stop me if there's something you really want to ask, but otherwise, we'll just move through it. So as overview background on the project, the entire project encompasses about 6,700 feet of 8-inch gravity sewer pipe, and that's, you know, the entire length of Elm Street, all the way from Reservoir to Main Street. And it includes a piece of Reservoir Street as well as Miller Terrace along the way. So that's the basic area of the sewer. It's about 70 properties that would be fronted by sewer this part of the project. There's one municipal wastewater pump station at the low point, so the wastewater will all be flowing by gravity in this area, collecting at one low point, and then pumped into the existing system. Also, as part of this, it's an entire replacement of the aging and undersized water main in Elm Street. 4,500 feet of water main improvements on Elm Street. So what's the main reason we even got to where we are now? It's all of our grant funding and the money. And that started with the town planners. So initially, it was Paul, when Paul, did you say he was the town planner? He identified an opportunity for a grant for the design of this work out here. He did, he submitted the expression of interest, submitted the actual grant application, and we've been awarded grants that are 100% funding the design of all of this work. So the design is completely being paid through grants. And then more recently, Maria came onboard as the planner, and she advanced, as we're entering the design here, she advanced with the grant agencies an application to participate in the construction. And we were successful in getting a $3.5 million grant towards the work that we're talking about here today. So that's why we're talking about it. So why did we even apply for the grants? Why were we successful? We're going to talk next about 47 Elm Street, because that was really the driving force, the Reeden Barton property was really the driver behind the ability to get that grant money. So just as some background on Reeden Barton, it was in business from like 1972 to 2013. I know it's really small here. You can probably see it better up there. So basically, in 2015, it went into receivership. So that's where we're at right now. Nobody owns it, and there's been a bunch of work, you know, both mandated and done. The state's been involved, EPA's been involved. A lot of work has been done at the site to make it, make it safe and secure and also ultimately make it marketable. So there's been a lot of cleanup at the site, and that work still is ongoing in terms of, like I said, at least at a minimum, getting it to where it's safe and secure. If you go to the next slide, and we can talk more about that timeline if you want. There's just a lot that's happened over the last decade. So the town 2021 master plan, it specifically identified this parcel as a priority economic target area. So this parcel has been identified already. The master plan also talks about making investments in infrastructure to promote economic development. So this is some of the key elements of the master plan and, again, driving forces behind the reason we got this grant money. So currently, DEFCO North America is pursuing ownership. They have been for some time now, and there's a lot for them to work through. Anybody that wants to buy this property, there's a lot of things that they need to look at and determine if it's a viable venture. One of their, you know, one of the proposals that they put forward is the development of 150 apartments and 10,000 square feet of commercial space at that property. Whatever they do, there's still significant remediation work to be able to do anything at that scale. And also, infrastructure improvements, water and sewer, are necessary for the property to be redeveloped to its full potential. The utilities are definitely lacking. So that brings us to town meeting article. So we put forth an article for the 2000, well, article number 10 for the 2024 annual town meeting. Basically, on the article, we're asking for $8.6 million to build exactly what we just talked about. And then there's some discussion on how we will pay for it. And I'll go into more discussion on that in slides that you can actually read. And we can back to that, but we'll talk about what the article was. So looking at, so the cost of the project. So there's two key components, the water main and the sewer. The cost of the water main. You know, right now, where we stand now with the design, the information we have, it's ranging from $2 million to $2.3 million. The sewer work is somewhere between $5.6 million and $6.3 million, based on the estimates we've done. So if you total those out, we're looking at a project that's between $7.6 million and $8.6 million. So we are currently using the high-end number, because that's what makes sense to do. We want to make sure we have enough money to do everything that we need to do to build this project properly. So how do we pay for it? So right off the bat, $3.5 million for the masterworks grant comes off of whatever that final total is. The piece, the water piece, can be covered through the water rates. We cover through the water rates, and that is the plan. We'll obviously have to, you know, separate the contract up and clearly define, you know, which pieces of it are the water and the sewer. I will say, you know, we talked about $7.6 to $8.6 million. If you were to build the two separately, it would be more like, you know, $9 million to $10 million to build them separately, come out, do the water one time, and then come back to the sewer. So, you know, the biggest thing on the economy, the scale is paving the road once, obviously. But there are other reasons that, you know, doing it at the same time is safer. So if we assume the water rate, assume that water piece is $2 million, and we recover the $2 million from water rates, then we're talking about betterments. You know, that is in the article to approve it with the assessment of betterments to properties that are fronted, bettered by the sewer. You know, I mentioned it fronts about 70 units that actually equates, or 70 properties that equates to 100 equivalent dwelling units. So one betterment unit is equivalent to a single-family home. There are some, there are a bunch of single-family homes out there, but there are also some duplexes and some larger, there's an apartment complex. There are other properties that have more than one unit. So it comes out to, you know, based on what's out there now, 100 units. And using the betterments that were assessed on the most recent project, the West Main Street project, was 16,000 per betterment. So that brings us to one, that would be 1.6 million. So it leaves .5 to 1.5 million, based, again, on the range of cost that we're talking about here. So let's go back. So, you know, an important thing to point out on the betterments is that does not include what we would assess the Reeden Barton property. So now, if we take a look at that, because we would, you know, under the betterment law, any property that's fronted will be assessed a betterment. If we were to look at Reeden Barton, not have any idea what they were going to build out there just based on the buildable land area, using a calculation of, you know, gallons per acre, I think we'd come up with it could be somewhere around 16 units, which would be like $250,000. If we look at it based on what they're proposing to build, if they really aren't going to put 150 apartments in there, that's 150 units. So now we're talking about $2 million. So we can assess that property. So then the issue is, nobody owns that property. So you've now assessed the property, and how are we really going to pay for that money? Right? So, and this is kind of the pieces that still need to be figured out. And how do we make up that gap and make this project, you know, viable to go forward? You know, so you could attach it to the property. You have to have that, I guess, that discussion about it's already, it's already challenging to get someone to buy that property if there's a larger lien on it. Is that going to make it more difficult? But does the infrastructure offset that? There's also, you know, if these utilities are going to make it more promising to get that property developed, are you ultimately going to get something built out there and realize the significant tax revenues that you're running off right now? And can we apply the tax revenues for that property once it's developed to help pay the rest of this debt down until it's paid down? And then those tax revenues will just become part of the whole tax base. So just some things that, again, and that's, that is a moving piece. The 1.5 million is based on our high-end estimate. We're still, well, let's go to the next slide, I'll explain. You know, so we're, we're still finalizing our design. Some of the big components that we're wrapping up soon here are, you know, and these are probably three of the things that are going to drive the cost as much, if not more than anything, is where we're going to put the pump station. We're looking at a site at the intersection of Miller Terrace and Elm Street. It's Norton Land Preservation Society. We've had, we've been on site with members of the society, and we're going to go before a meeting. So there's been some open discussions about it. Everybody's, seems like we're going to be able to make it work, but there's some more hurdles we need to get through there. And we're working with the Conservation Commission. We're going to get the wetlands out there flagged, or our wetlands on the site, but we can get the setbacks that we need. So anyway, that's, and if we can get the site there, that's a low point. That'll be the shallowest pump station site, so that would be the best cost scenario. We have to look at the force main routing, you know, so originally, you know, there's a couple different ways we could go with the force main. Initially, we were thinking it would go up to Reservoir Street and into the system that's currently in Reservoir Street. We've done capacity analysis up there, and that system really can't handle it. So the force main would be a lot longer. We'd have to go past some of the sewers up there and get all the way to Cobb Street, if you're familiar with the Cobb Street pump station. So we also have a force main alternative that we're looking at that comes the other way to Pine Street and over to the infrastructure associated with the pump station at Wheaton College, the town center pump station. We're looking at the hydraulics of that, but if we can go that route, that's significantly shorter, and will save us some money. And then one of the biggest things is, starting on Monday, we're doing the borings, the subservice investigations, because on any real project, that's going to drive the cost. Find out what's under the ground and what we need to be prepared to account for in the estimates that we have. So we have some conservative numbers now. We'll be able to refine those and see if, you know, ultimately, whatever we're doing now is still just a projection. It's going to ultimately be when we actually construct it, how much we can bring that last piece down. The .5 to 1.5 million, how much can we really bring that down? So that's kind of where we are today. So what are the next steps? So we're finalizing the design report based on all the information we're compiling. We'll file the permits, which at this point is just the Conservation Commission. We're doing public outreach. This is part of the public outreach. We will do a public meeting for anybody in town, but also for, you know, specifically for the residents in that area, bring them up to speed with what we're looking at doing. We'll finalize the contract documents. And based on the grant monies, the design grant goes through the end of this fiscal year. So we're wrapping up over the next few months here with that grant and with that design. One slide. Which is timeline to complete. So assuming town meeting authorization, which obviously is the next big step, hurdle, whatever, we'll have the design complete in June. We'd be ready to bid over the summer. Hopefully, start construction in the fall, and we anticipate it as about a year-long construction. So anticipate we could be done with construction under this schedule, if everything goes according to this schedule, because it only is October. Under the grant, we, the grant monies need to be expended before the end of fiscal year '26. So that would be June 26th. So that's, that's where we're at. So hopefully, I didn't go too fast. But that is the information we wanted to present and hopefully paint the picture of what we've been up to, why we're doing it, and, you know, ultimately, we're hoping to get the support of town. We'd love to get the support of town meeting. I hope it's coming across, you know, how we feel this is a benefit to the town, you know, to provide, hopefully, a path to getting that property cleaned up, developed, and becoming a viable, tax-based viable property.
Anybody have questions?
Yes.
Good to hear.
You guys mentioned the West Main project that you guys worked on?
Yes.
I believe you came back to town meeting three times for additional plans because of the conditions of the ground?
Correct. So... It was one of the reasons, it was the biggest driver, yeah.
So we were, I guess we were surprised by the conditions after we did the boring, but did you use those same conditions for the estimates that you have here?
Well, no, I mean, we have different, so we have, we're still gathering the data, the boring data to come up, to finalize those numbers. So right now, there's conservative assumptions, and we do understand that, you know, nobody likes to be low, so we're trying to make sure we're not low with the numbers. A lot went into what happened before. The ledge certainly became more problematic than we had anticipated. We had a contractor that struggled to get the work done, and it was a challenge to actually get that job completed, you know, based on the conditions that they ran into in their ability to get it done in the end. So, yeah, I do understand that that was unfortunate.
And it would be fair to assume that there's probably going to be some ledge, maybe a half mile away?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's why I have the borings. We're making sure that we've got a better identification of it than what we had before. We have to do, you know, we're going to do more sampling in between, you know. So the industry standards, you do the testing every 300 feet. And what really happened is everything came up in the middle, in Y areas. So we're going to do more, you know, more testing along this way. We're spending more money on the testing going in.
That was actually my question to tap on your question, as to what you're going to do to mitigate those issues this time.
Yeah, I mean, short of digging the trench before you start, you know, which you obviously can't do, you know, so we're going to, you know, do a lot more probing and spend a little more money upfront to better it down.
And that's...
And another question is the water rates. You said the water rates $2 million. What does that mean exactly? An increase in water rates to accomplish $2 million?
No, I mean, it's within the range. So Frank, can you?
$2 million would be actually worked into the annual budget. Be borrowed over time, either typically over 20 or 30 years, depending on what the treasurer chooses at the time. If there's other borrowings that are going to take place, you can lump it together, you get a better borrowing rate. So we work with the town treasurer before we put any of our projects out to be... There could be an increase because of this project. There could be an increase because of many other projects that are coming down the line. Nothing is really set in stone right now. We're doing a rate study for both the water and sewer. It's actually in progress right now. That's probably going to take six to eight months to complete, and we actually know exactly where we stand with existing projects, paydowns that we have now, and future projects like this one.
Kevin, do you have anything on there?
Uh, yeah, I could just ask a question, and I'm sorry if this is already covered, but will this require any residents to tie into the new sewer system?
So, yes. So the sewer, the new timeframe is seven years, based on the last town meeting vote. So under the betterments, everybody that's fronted and provided with a service will be assessed a betterment upon substantial completion of the project. That can be paid upfront or portioned through their taxes over 20 years. And then they have seven years to actually tie into the system if they choose to wait. But they do, they are under that timeframe to eventually tie in.
And do we know how many, approximately, how many residents this would impact?
So it's 70 properties.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Frank, did you want to add anything else, or are you...
I'll keep you short.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, next up, we have the review of the department permit fees. I think I saw Nick here. And we have Lucas Ray as well.
You want to go first?
You have a shoe for it?
You can make your pitch, and then...
Should we just state your name and address?
My address? So my name is Lucas Ray. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a contractor in town. I've been here doing the contract work for the last 20 plus years. I just basically go to recap of our last meeting. I'd like to read. For the citizens who missed the last selectman's meeting, when we discussed the building permit fees, I'd like to do a quick recap to refresh everyone. So as of a few years ago, Norton was very comparable to the surrounding towns in regards to the building permit fees. Then the previous buildings back there drastically raised the fees to some of the highest in the state. Norton is now comparable to large cities like Cambridge and Somerville when it comes to the fees we pay for essential repairs like roofs, decks, windows, and siding. At our last meeting, I was asked to meet with the building inspector and the town manager, Mr. Unis. So myself and Mr. Horns, we had a meeting with Mr. Unis and Mr. Iafredi, the inspector. Mr. Unis said to me at the meeting that he felt that the building permit fees were where they needed to be, and that even though they were higher than surrounding towns, it was his hope that eventually the other towns would catch up to Norton. We were clearly in disagreement on the topic. After watching several of the town meetings, I realized that the town is facing a budget deficit, and the last thing the town manager wants to do is cut into that revenue stream by reducing fees on permits. So I have to ask the question, is the budget, current budget deficit a reason to overcharge homeowners for these fees? I don't think so. Should the citizens in Norton be paying upwards of four to five times higher fees than surrounding towns like Mansfield, Rantham East, and Foxborough just because we have budget issues? I don't think so. Just to be clear, lowering these fees will not affect my business in any way or any other business in town in any way. These fees are incorporated into the estimates we provide to our customers. Who these fees will affect? Our homeowners in town living on a tight budget, the elderly, the folks on fixed incomes. I just did a roof on King Philip Road from my mother's neighborhood. The elderly folks who live on a fixed income and have been in the house since I was a kid. They put away $100 a month to save up $10,000 to do their roof. Do the math, took them over eight years to save up... Do the math, took them over eight years to save up this money. The permit fee for this job was a hundred and fifty dollars or a month and a half of savings for these folks. Another customer of mine, an elderly woman on West Main Street, was forced by her insurance company to fix up her home, or they were going to cancel her policy. She had to do the windows, the siding, and the roof to satisfy the insurance requirements. Her permit fee was six hundred and fifty dollars. If we were in Mansfield, that permit would have been a hundred and fifty dollars. So how is that fair to the citizens in Norton? So I had brought with me a breakdown of the current fees and the comparison to the surrounding towns. If you look through, you can see the note, the drastic difference in the fees in the surrounding towns, such as Mansfield, Easton, Foxborough, Rantham, and Rehoboth. As a matter of fact, we're even higher than Attabro, which is considered the city. Norton also has what's called a base fee on every residential permit and a hundred dollar, a fifty dollar base fee on every residential permit and a hundred dollar base fee on commercial permits. The only other town with a base fee is Shauran at seventy five dollars. This base fee is just a conversation starter, and then you get to pay the ten dollars per thousand for the contracted job price. Towns like Mansfield, Foxborough, Rantham, Easton, Berkeley, all charge a flat rate fee for small projects like roofs. The ten dollars per thousand makes sense to me when you're talking about building an addition or a project that requires several site visits or inspections. But it doesn't make sense when you're doing small projects. I've been roofing in town for twenty plus years, and I've never seen a building inspector show up to look at a roof job. The higher fees on the smaller projects are just the money grabbed and not justified. So I've done a spreadsheet of the surrounding towns and also a proposal where I think the fees should be here in Norton. If this spreadsheet doesn't suffice and we can't agree on the fees, then maybe we just copy and paste Mansfield, as they're the closest neighboring town, and the fees seem to be very comparable to the other surrounding towns. So what I provided to the select board and the town manager is it's a breakdown of the towns, surrounding towns. Everything I highlighted, so the front page, we can go page by page, but the front page, all the highlighted towns are cheaper than Norton. Mansfield, Foxborough, Rantham, Easton, Berkeley, Lakeville, Freetown, and Bridgewater all charge a flat rate fee of between fifty and seventy five dollars. If you look at the difference of a twenty thousand dollar roof job, Norton is two hundred and fifty dollars. Mansfield is fifty. Foxborough is seventy five. Rantham fifty, B C fifty, Berkeley forty five. You go down Laurel, Lakeville fifty, Freetown fifty, Bridgewater seventy five. So just to be fair, you know, for the crowd, because you can't see what I'm looking at, Rehoboth is a hundred and eighty dollars. So they're seventy dollars less than us. Dayton is a hundred and eighty dollars for that same project. They're seventy dollars less. Middleboro is two hundred dollars. They're fifty dollars less. Canton, two twenty, so they're thirty less. And Attabro, which is a city, and cities are always notoriously high for permit fees, Attabro is fifty dollars less. The towns that are higher are Plainville, Shauran, Bridgewater, and Ranham. And Ranham's always been notorious for the atrocious fees. So if you go through really quickly, the first page, the second page, it just is a breakdown of the Norton permits. So you can see all the base fees, you know, for everything. You're talking demolition, accessory structures, reconstruction, new builds, everything has a base fee. So the base fee is just, like I said, a conversation starter before you get hit with, you know, the the ten or twelve dollars per thousand rate. If you continue to stroll through these, these are all the different towns. And what I did was I highlighted just every single town. You know, as you can see, Mansfield, Foxborough, I just highlighted the small projects like roofs, siding, windows, you know, right through about a dozen towns. So you can see that almost every town has a flat rate fee, you know, for small projects. Like I said, I I understand when a building inspector has to come out on a new build or an addition, we see him, you know, four or five times, you know, that that is justified to to get the the permit fees, but not when we're doing a roof or we're doing a siding project of some windows and, you know, we got to pay hundreds of dollars for permits. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, guys? Kevin, do you have any questions? Kevin?
Yeah, sorry. So again, just one question. So what's what's the what's the proposal, Lucas?
So, well, so what I was saying was, I I would propose eliminating the base fee. I don't feel I don't feel that's fair. Shauran is the only other town with a base fee. And, you know, whether we copy and paste Mansfield or some, you know, one of the surrounding towns, I think what we should do is we should, you know, stop basing projects like roof, siding, windows, you know, small projects on the cost of the job. If you get a twenty thousand dollar job, you shouldn't be paying ten dollars per thousand of that cost. That's two hundred bucks plus the base fee. You know, I think we should go comparable to the surrounding towns, which is a base fee on these small projects to give some relief to the homeowners. Now, Mansfield has a pretty good system. You know, Foxborough has a great system, Rantham Easton. I don't have any grip with any of the way to calculate their fees. And Norton, I never had a problem with Norton's fees until, you know, the previous inspector checked them out. And like I said, I don't feel like we should be hitting the homeowners for these fees because we have budget issues. You know, that's not fair to the homeowners, so.
So I mean, I I would recommend, because we're just seeing your recommendations now, that maybe we get together and put a proposal together, an official one for a meeting in the future. I mean, if everybody's okay with that, I I'll work with this and.
I got no problem sitting down with everybody, you know, even, you know, sitting down with Mr. Iaffredi and coming up with something fair, you know, and what I propose is fair. Obviously, you know, we're not in agreement on the fees, so, but, so I guess I'll propose my, what's fair to me and the homeowners, and, you know, it's, you guys make that decision.
Yeah, my thought is, you know, on this, I don't think we could do a vote on this tonight, but I, you know.
I agree.
I I think we should dig into this a little bit more and put a proposal together if there's going to be changes. That that's just my thoughts on it. I don't know. What do you all feel?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, the, so I printed these out and I highlighted some of these, you know, some of these areas where, you know, you can see if you take, you know, I did email these to the board last week, so, you know, people have a chance to take a look at it, but, you know, I think we could draw up something that's fair, you know, a little more fair to the towns.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Is, I don't know if Mike can speak to this or if Nick is there, but in our packets, there was like a, looked like an handwritten note that that showed us the total amount of fees collected by the town for fiscal year twenty two, it looks like. And I just had a question because on that handwritten note, it says for residential fees, seven hundred and twenty permits issued, two hundred and seventy seven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. And then it said two hundred and twenty six thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars, it looks like, or eighty seven dollars waived. So can someone explain what waived fees, and does that mean that the actual revenue from the from the fees is two hundred and seventy seven thousand minus two hundred and twenty six thousand?
Kevin, that's an excellent question. I was going to actually have Nick come up if you wanted to and go over his.
So I do have a little insight into that. So some, I've done several projects for the town where I had to pay a permit fee to do a town building. Since Nick's been in office, that hasn't been a problem. I typically call up and complain to him on Cathy and say, why is the town paying for permits for their own buildings? And we've we've been able to get those waived, so it makes no sense to me, but.
I think it's been years since we. Not only fees.
Yeah, and just just to clarify that before you go, Lucas, you're, you're thinking of change just the residential fees, not the commercial?
Yes, so the residential fees. Well, Mr. Units, I'm pretty sure I confirmed that the plumbing, the plumbing fees were were built for the new buildings that just went up in the senior center and the town hall. So I was I was able to confirm that you guys did not waive the fees.
No, plumbing fees may have, but not the permit fee.
Well, plumbing, permit fees, we're not waived.
Thank you, Lucas. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Lucas.
That's a quick response. Right, we talked about this before. So to answer your question, Kevin, I'm going to be honest, this was done a couple of months ago, the numbers I put together, the packet you guys have. So I'd have to look back and give you what an honest answer is to that calculation on the residential fees. And I haven't seen the package Lucas put together tonight. I haven't seen, but we'll briefly, too, not to carry on, but when we talked about this a couple of months ago, I think it was in the fall.
Yeah.
That we met, we had, Lucas had run some numbers, I ran some numbers for some towns. And it's every three or four years that we're supposed to look through our fee schedule to compare and contrast and determine if we need to to raise the fees, lead the fees, or change at all. So doing that, I I haven't touched them since two thousand and nineteen, when they were modified by the previous building commissioners, because I felt that they were in line and suitable. So out of the twenty two towns that I pulled, I I thought we were right in the middle of the mix. So that's my reasoning for not coming in front of of the board and really proposing any change to them. As far as the discussion about changing the fees, I, that's up to you guys. I'd be more than happy to sit down and and assist and give you my opinion if it comes to that. So that's pretty much it for my response.
I I mean, I'd be open to having a meeting with all of us, again, and maybe go through line by line of the fees to present something to the board, whether it's make changes, make no changes, or whatever we come up with.
Happy to do that.
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, just so, so Nick, what's the deal with the waived fees?
That's that's what I was saying, Kevin. I'd have to look back and and double check those numbers. Because when I when I put all these together, it was back in October, November, I believe, when we sat down.
Okay. Okay.
I have the receipt and everything, and the numbers based off of what what that calculation is back at my office. I didn't bring it with me, but I can certainly put that together for the next meeting.
Yeah, if we could get like even like a like a three to five year view or something, if that's available, that would be great, so we can kind of just look at it year over year. Maybe there was something unique to twenty twenty two, you know, and and we want to see a couple more years if if that's possible, just to, you know, have a a more complete picture.
Yeah, I can go back three or five. That helps.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you.
To to add to that, I I think something that that we talked about when we met a few months back was that it's really hard to determine which ones were actually for the new construction versus renovations. Some of the fees that we want, that Lucas would want to eliminate, it's not all of them, so maybe that's something we could try to dig into. I know it's it's probably hard to get those numbers.
So in order for me to go back, and so we just switched your new permitting software in November. In order for me to go back in the old permitting software, I would have to go through every individual permit to decide, to determine if the permit was for a roof, it was for addition, it was for siding, if it was for windows, because the the reports didn't run as specific in the old software. I could do my best, but it that'll take these quite some time.
No, I I wouldn't ask you to to take to take that much time.
So these numbers here were all of the residential building permit fees that we issued in that fiscal year compared to all the commercial fees. As far as the waived numbers, I again, I have to look back because it doesn't jog my memory.
Yeah. So the, so with the new system, you are able to separate it out, root permit versus, okay. So maybe, you know, maybe when we get together, we can do it from November, when you get the new software, to to now, and that'll give you at least a month's worth of data, and we can figure it out. Yeah, we can, we can talk about it.
Can do that, absolutely, whatever helps.
Awesome. All right, any other questions, Kevin? You good?
Nope, I'm good, thanks. Thanks, Lucas, and thanks, Nick. Appreciate it.
Welcome. Denise, Alex, yes. All right, thank you very much. You have a copy from last time, too, right? All right, next up, we have a discussion and a vote to open the special town meeting from May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. And if I'm speaking too fast, it's because I'm a good monster.
I'd like to make a motion to open the special town meeting to be held on Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four, at seven fifteen P M. All articles will be accepted until four P M. of March twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four, at the select boards' office.
Motion to second. Kevin?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
I have a yes.
Right, when you were very sensible. Right, and obviously, commercial, but particularly residential.
Gentlemen? Frankie?
I highlighted the ones that were equal to or higher.
Thank you. All right, so now we have the discussion and our votes regarding the ballot questions for April twenty twenty four town election.
So this question was developed by town council. And if you do make the motion tonight, question one will say, shall the town revoke its acceptance of general law chapter thirty one, the civil service law for all positions in the police department? And question two, shall the town revoke its acceptance of general law chapter thirty one, the civil service law for all positions in the fire department?
And we've already endorsed those, right?
Yep, we have, and we had the fire department out of civil service at maybe town meeting in our October town meeting. And the unions have agreed to this and are on board with it.
Any questions, Kevin?
No questions.
And do we have to read the whole thing or just make the motion to the for the ballot questions?
Say it's written, right?
Yeah.
Table will prove it as written.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vote we got in the ballot question for April two thousand and twenty four town election as written.
A second.
Motion to second. Kevin?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
I have a yes. All right. I thought we'd be crazy. Let's see. I know, right? Now, we have the vote, uh, let's see. Discussion vote for the annual town meeting articles.
You had the warrant, and I don't know if you're ready to vote on any of these. If you wanted to, you could start voting on a couple, I think, but that's.
Yeah, I think most of them are set, right?
Well, so the first, Article two is the chapter ninety transportation aid program. It's willing to accept any monies that the state will provide us under the chapter ninety program. And the tree service for thirty one thousand dollars, that's for the highway department for trees that are too large for them to handle on near wires that are danger trees and need to come down. They bring in the crane for those.
Okay, if anybody wants to make a motion on any of these, we can discuss it, or you want to hold off for the next meeting.
I think I'd prefer a hold option to give me the room. Sorry.
So I guess everybody, everybody here said it's okay if we skip the next one, the Barrows Court hearing. We can skip that.
Everybody's just like a rain.
All right, we have, for people at home, we have quite a few people in the audience here for this, so we're going to have an update on the Barrows Court hearing. Who wants to speak on that first?
Jared?
Jared? Who we're going to, who we're going to single out here?
I can just give you an update, and Jared can enlighten you more on it. Jared's been working at ways, along with Judge Thomas from the conservation, on ways to improve the yard system out there. And I know Jared's been out this week clearing some trees in the area so that it'll dry out quicker and he can get out. And he's looking to remove a steel pipe that comes out at the outlaw.
And I know we, John Thomas, we'll see if we'll make it tonight, but he did put a pretty good plan together, so Jared, or if you want to.
Do you have a brief explanation of what we want to do?
Yeah. And afterwards, just so we know how we're going to do it, afterwards, if there are any questions from the audience, you can come up, ask some questions to the board, and we'll get some answers for you.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. So basically, like Tom Andrew said, we're just going to remove about 350 feet of steel pipe that runs from north to south behind, I think it starts behind house number four, and it gets past further south than house number two. And the goal is to temporarily increase the volume of that drainage even just because of the increase in storms, obviously, that everyone's aware of. And hopefully get that water to flow south faster, just to help drain that neighborhood a little sooner in an event of a moderate rainstorm anyway. That's about all. Actually, we'll also create a head wall for the pipe that runs east to west in between house two and four that would dump into that swale. And that's about all.
Jared was telling me on the way in today, he got information from the National Weather Service, and January in Norton was the wettest January in 24 years.
I just wanted to confirm everything you said. That 24 years, it was 8.38 inches in January, and it was actually four previous, the previous month of December was the second or third wettest in 24 years, so. Yeah, two, two months of good rainfall.
All right, thank you, Jared.
We're currently tied at a half inches over the annual average.
So do we have anyone in the audience would like to ask any questions?
I'd like to.
Yeah, come on up to the podium. And just state your name and your address.
My name's Joe Hunt. I live at one Barrows Court. The flooding is directly in front of my house. I have lived at that house for 48 years. And during that time, I've seen rainfall that's much, much heavier than what we see now. I've seen six inches at once in the flood room, the street will not flood. The drainage system and the sizes itself is more than adequate. The problem being is the pipe that runs behind Stanley's house is partially plugged. And that's the only problem.
What's, what number is Stanley's house?
Two.
Number two.
The quick and easy fix is create a spillage to be able to pass across the top of that ground that would handle the water that it doesn't back up on the Barrows Court. And you only need to go about 12 inches deep. And the marking is all still out there, you can see the high watermark and all the rocks right now. So if you go 12 inches below that high watermark with a backhoe, even when it's 18 inches wide, and you go a foot down, you're going to have a spillway that's going to handle the problem. And there's only about two sections that's 10 feet long that really needs to be removed. And again, if you walk out there, you can see it. You can see two mounds of dirt, each one's about 10 feet long. You take out that and the problem goes away. Now, it doesn't resolve the problem being plugged, the pipe being plugged, but it does alleviate the water from being on Barrows Court. It's a simple fix, it's a willingness to do it.
Why is the pipe, why is the pipe plugged? So the next.
Well, it is in my opinion that two years ago, when this problem really started about five years ago, that it started in causing the problem backing up on Barrows Court. Two years ago, the town came down and then ran a camera from the street on Barrows Court behind Stanley's house. And they did, pardon?
Which number is?
Stanley's number two.
We're not going to have a prospect.
No, that's all right, that's fine. And there was nothing found. But what they did do two years ago, where the pipe exits towards Barrows Street down that way, they came in and took a backhoe and cleaned, cleared the brush and rubbish that had piled up back there. Now, I theorize, I don't know for sure, but I theorize because that had backed up. The debris that was coming through the pipe didn't have a place to go, so it backed up into the pipe. That's what I theorize, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. We can have the town, I'm sure they'll, they'll have a response to.
You have a question?
No, I was going to come up and speak to you in a minute.
Please.
Yeah, Jared, you went on the stairs.
Yes, that's fine. So yeah, I personally cleaned that up, that swale south of that outfall that you're mentioning, but the assessment, I don't believe makes much, much sense. It actually opened up, you know, more volume for that pipe to flow. And to back up to your previous question, it's forgiven, not great publicly speaking, I don't even remember any questions, but personally, but the reason why I assessed that the pipe wasn't plugged, it's like I've been here for 10 years and we cleaned that, like you said, two years ago. I've constantly seen the water flow to that pipe, especially during, before, during, and after that, that rain event. So the initial rain event on the, on the 10th, January 10th, I believe it was, that issue, like you said, the water, you know, if it could just flow over the top of that, that land, it was, and it did for about 48 hours. And that whole rain, that whole flooding event on Barrows Court was caused, I have pictures, I mean, I only have one copy of each picture, but the water table was actually touching the bottom of the deck of Barrows Court Bridge. And so if you're working your way back from the system from the lowest point, so the water table, like I said, was at the base of that bridge, and then as you moved further back, it was completely covering the culvert, which crosses the driveway of, I think it's 131, 113 Barrows Court. It's the, it's the driveway with the brick pillars, which pretty much put the outflow that you're speaking to, that we cleaned up to, almost completely underwater. And of course, that would, that would back up the whole system. So that was, that was at least for January 10th, there was 100% nothing to do with the pipe. There was actually about a foot of water flowing over, over the area that you were talking about behind house two, behind house four. And it didn't subside until, you know, like I said, the water table actually, you know, that's the leach through the ground, which wasn't very, it wasn't possible for it to happen previous to that event because it was the frost in the ground, but obviously in all that rain. So it took the 48 hours, the water table lowered, and it slowly had to make its way out of that outfall. The next rain event where it flooded, it was, it had a lot to do with the runoff north of that drop inlet. If I could describe the system, like I said, the last manhole on Barrows Court, the lowest manhole is in between, on the street in between house four and six. From there, it runs about maybe 100 feet west behind house four, two and four. It goes into a drop inlet, which is the shallow manhole. And then from there, it turns south. So that whole manhole was getting inundated as of, I think it was Tuesday I was out there last, maybe even Wednesday. And runoff water from that whole watershed was continuing to fill that inlet, which again slows down that process. So nothing's changed in that system. And I've been out there every day. I don't remember camera, like you said, I was here during that time. I do remember running snakes visually looking through it, watching water out, you know, outflow to that pipe. So it's, it's clear, it's at least, nothing has changed since I've been here with the condition of that pipe. But I know what has changed is the, is the influx of storms and rainwater and almost a perfect storm as of January 10th with the, with the fast melting and the increase of those rainstorms in that, that short period of time. But I don't remember if there's any other questions that I could address.
Why don't I take the comment if I may?
What's that?
To do the trenches on the.
Yeah, so I agree with your point. Again, I don't, it wasn't the cause, there, there isn't a plug on the pipe as far as I'm concerned, but just to, just to help alleviate the issue in the meantime, I'd like to increase, like you said, the volume by excavating that pipe just to get it out of there, it'll make it so I can inspect it easier. Obviously, when I went out there last time, two years ago to clean it, it was during a relatively dry time. So when the dry season is there, at least it'll allow me to visually see if it's clear of debris, I can, you know, run a machine down there and excavate it. So I agree with you, and it'll be much more volume than 12 inches, it'll probably be something about 36 inches deep, probably about six or seven feet wide, and it'll match that swale that runs past.
All right, thank you, Jared.
Yep.
Any further questions from?
May I add something?
Yes, come on up.
Again, I would disagree with you, and there's a reason why I disagree with you. And I took photographs of it, that even though the water had backed up on the Barrows Court, and you could see the water level on the land around there, the water coming out of that pipe was only two thirds of the way up the pipe. It wasn't full, the water wasn't coming out, and it was filling onto water that was lower than that. If that water, if the water was passing through that pipe without any restriction, and the water's that high on Barrows Court, that pipe would have been full of water exiting. It wasn't, it was only two thirds of the way up, and I have photos of it. So I would disagree with you respectfully.
Yeah.
So we're gonna, I'm going to have Mike read John Thomas's, I guess it's his options that we're going to try to do here.
So on Monday, this is from John Thomas, Barrows Court was subject to a one and a half inch rain event in 10 hours this past Saturday. Significant flooding within Barrows Court was reported, and since then, the flooding has receded. Jared and I have looked at drainage conditions this afternoon, and the highway department will be looking to service the drainage area through available easements and town properties. Available options could consist of the following phases within the limits of the easements and town land. Phase one work will require creating service access off Barrows Street onto town of Norton land. Trees and vegetation will be trimmed and removed with the drainage easement, within the drainage easement and on town land. Phase two work will require removing the drop inlet structure and existing 24 inch corrugated metal pipe. Phase three work will require addressing the drainage outfall location of removed drop inlet structure near four Barrows Court, lot three on the plan, with a repurposed head wall and flared end. Phase four work will require excavating and reforming the outfall drainage area near the existing drop inlet, creating a vegetated drainage swale with embankments, same location as the 400 foot plus length of pipe, and creating a storm outfall basin to capture sediment before leaving town property. From what I can assess, the drop inlet appears to be the main restriction of flow and flooding issue. Removing this item from the equation should in theory alleviate flooding issues in Barrows Court. All site work to the structures and pipe will require dry conditions for access and excavation purposes. The work shall be under the guidance of the conservation department and comply with MS4 and conservation emergency procedures.
So, so this is, this is the available options, and I think Jared had pointed to, once, once everything has dried out and that we're getting into the drier season, they can make more, make these more, confirm these options here.
May I make a question? Please. Instead of, instead of going up there. It's a question and a comment. One, they would be able to, they were able to get out there today with an excavator, that they can do the job. And the second, I haven't heard anything about a timeline to have this work completed.
So the timeline, from what I gather, would be when, when it dries up further. But Jared, you can speak to it.
I'm going to sit here.
Yeah, come on up. Keeps him to court.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so we started two days ago now. Today, completed the first phase of trimming it, exactly, we could get out there, that's why we're starting now. Like I said, initially, we couldn't put a 10,000 pound machine inside of a swamp. So yeah, so exactly to your point, we're out there trimming the trees in the next phase, under the, under the guidance of the conservation agent, because, you know, the pipe is still, is still, is still active flow, it's just that area we tracked it to trim the trees and while that pipe is dry enough to, to work on.
So yeah, so essentially, you know, Mr. Unitz just read John Thomas's options, you're already into phase one of this, so it's already.
Yeah, as long as conditions are either stable or improved, and we'll just keep on doing what we can as we, as we can.
What I'd like to hear is a saying that work's going to be done and excavated within the next two or three days. That's what I want to hear.
I mean, I can't speak to that. I have to work under the guidance of the conservation agent for all sorts of conservation reasons.
Well, when you, when you look at conservation rules, there's a couple, three things that are cabbies regarding health, safety, and well-being of the residents. And that should supersede anything that they have.
Yeah, John Thomas is here, he could probably speak to it. I'm not an expert on the conservation laws, only the, only the work we do.
All right, do we have any other questions from the audience? Could you come on up, please?
So John, John needs to start attending these meetings where we're going to discuss.
Just come up and say your name and your address.
Yeah. So is John going to be attending these, oh, it's Patwell of 16 Barrows Court. Conservation, conservation member wasn't here last time. We knew, he knew we were going to discuss it. He's not here again. This is a issue where we're held hostage on our street at certain times, whenever we are.
Mr. Chairman, he's on vacation, so sorry about that.
Wasn't on vacation last time?
I don't remember the last time.
So that was two months ago, so I'm going to go back to that point now, is that we've been sitting on our street without active communication from the town for two weeks. So any communication that we have with the town has been proactive from us and not from the town at all. And that's disappointing, coming from our last meeting, where we had asked for the town to give us updates on a regular basis. So when is that going to start happening?
So we can discuss it?
Would.
So.
As we do work, we can let someone know.
So work has already started and we didn't know. So that, that's a problem for the residents. Like, we're, we're upset because we feel like we're not being heard, we're not being told what's going on. And I don't mean to speak for all of us, but.
Jared's work is dependent on the weather. He doesn't know when the weather is going to be right so he can get out there.
But he should be, but we should be getting updates about when you're going out there, what your plans are.
So what we can do is we can work with Jared and John Thomas and try to provide at least an update. I mean, it could be, they could have, you know, an opening that morning, but I think, and maybe we can work together and get an email sent out to everybody just to let you know that they're going to be out there. It's a start, it's not going to fix all the problems.
Yep.
But it's, I think that's, that's a good start.
We'd like, I'm sorry.
Jumping in?
Mr. Chairman?
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. No, that's okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think it would be helpful too, is, I think what's happening is we're getting, we're getting, folks are reaching out to us like individually, right? And that's fine, you know, that's, that's, that's totally fine. I know I've gotten text messages from residents and, you know, things like that, asking for updates and all that kind of stuff. I think it would be a good idea if we could try to get together, I mean, something simple, just an email group together of, of all the residents, and get all their email addresses and their texts and their, and their phone numbers, you know, where they can receive text messages, things like that. I think, I think part of it is just, is just, we're just getting sort of piecemeal requests from different folks, and again, that's fine, but it's not really an effective way to communicate with a big group of people. So if, if, if there was, I don't know if it's someone in the community, or if it's, you know, if it's, if it's a couple of folks in the, in the, of the residents, if they could try to pull together like the email addresses and phone numbers for everybody so we had that information, I think, I don't want to speak for the town manager, but I think we could probably put together a, you know, just an email group, and it would be a lot easier for us to, to reach out. So I think, I think it's, I'm not saying that's the only issue, but I'm saying I think it is a big issue that there's no sort of coordinated communication going on. And whatever we can do to help that, I think would help the communication issue quite a bit.
So you have 17 phone numbers right now from a text chain?
So, so to tag on to Kevin's point there, I mean, would it be helpful if there would be a point person from the neighborhood that communications go through, or like Kevin said, you have a, a group?
No, it needs to be group email, I think, like having one person.
So then, so then let's, let's, I mean, in the interest of making sure everybody's on the same page, maybe somebody from the community can get that whole email group together and get it to the town manager?
We can start with that, that's good. You've, you had an avenue before, the town had an avenue before, they didn't use it. So through, with 17, 17 emails, I mean, text numbers.
Okay. So let's, let's, let's keep going and let's get the email chain together.
All right, we can start with that, that's fine.
Yeah, because I think, I think, you know, if you're not getting any communication, I think we need to start that, so that's, that's a good start.
Yeah, just, Mr. Chairman, what I want to avoid is that we're communicating with five people, you know, five residents, but not, or 25. So I just want to make sure everybody's getting, whatever communication the town is sending, just make sure everybody's getting.
Yep. Two questions from last meeting. There was talk of the dam being the issue. Has there been any, have there been any, has there been any movement with the application for grants of anything with the dam? And then second question following up with that is, there was an issue with the owner of 138 Barrows Street who owns that dam. Has there been, has the town done anything to contact him?
All right, Mike, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So there's only certain times of the year that the grants open up, and so John is So there's only certain times of the year that the grants open up, and so John is keeping an eye on that. And the owner of the property, he'd be fine signing on with us if we get a grant, so, doesn't know where.
So you've contacted him?
Yes.
And he's been, he's responded back to it?
Yes.
Yeah, previously he wasn't responding, right?
Only when it's good for him, he responds.
Yeah. Final, last question I have is, Joe, in front of your street, I'm sure you've seen the cracks getting wider and wider in front of your street. Water, sitting water, and we discussed this last time, sitting water over the course of 18 to 24 hours, that's eight to 10 inches deep, it's not good for the street. Are there plans to fix the street?
So I'm not gonna speak for Jared, but I can say, because I'm in property management, I can say the problem has to be fixed before we can attack that, because the problem with the water isn't fixed yet, fixing the street's not gonna do anything, it's just gonna, it's gonna crack again. So we gotta fix the, the main issue first and then address the additional, but again, I don't wanna speak for you, Jared.
I'll just add that as a stopgap, I agree with you, I saw that, and I also agree with you, that was part of my understanding when we fix the problem, but in the meantime, I saw those cracks in the road, they'll be filled, cracks healed, just to make sure there's no further deterioration of the road. And then, when the main issue could be addressed, obviously that would be put on a list that we do every year, completely re-tape, reclaim our road.
Okay, so my expectation shortly is that there's some sort of timeline that's given to the residents as far as fixing the issue. You listed out three or four different phases, I'm not sure if there's an okay that needs to happen for that, or if that's already been signed off on. I don't know where we are in that process, but my expectation is that each resident has some sort of timeline that we're holding you guys accountable to. Because right now, there's no, there's nothing, and we have heard nothing, so, things need to change.
But the timeline in my, I mean, from what I understand is a lot weather-dependent, so, I mean, these guys would've been out there two months ago, starting this, had they been able to get their machines onto there. So I think, I think it's all weather-dependent. Usually, in, end of March, early April, there's a lot more rain, and I understand that's gonna be a frustrating thing too, but they're gonna be out there the second they can. And I think getting that email list together and having communication's gonna help, I think it's gonna go a long way, I hope.
We're gonna continue.
And can I just say, I mean, if, and I'll put myself out there too, if there's no communication and things are happening and you're still not getting communication, please let me know, or like Kevin, let us know. Because I, I mean, I wanna hold them to account just as much as you do, and if, if what they're saying is, I'm not gonna say it's not gonna happen, but if that were the case, please let us know. Directly, and then we'll take care of it immediately.
And for the time being, without the, any timeline with this going on, there's going to be transportation that's provided, two cars, because that did happen on Sunday, and we had to do what we had to do to get through it, but. Any, for water rises, after the rain stops, is what happens. And so, we were left to either go through it or send it home and kind of watch, watch what happened for the day.
Yeah, do you wanna speak to, Tep to you, do you wanna speak to that? Because I know I drove by, I think it was Sunday, too.
I guess a couple of things would be, there has been communication, right since the beginning of this, you've had a number of town employees and volunteers from NEMA that have worked hard diligently to try to get things done. Things do not happen overnight, people are working hard, there's nobody out against you or anything like that. Everybody is working together to get to the same common ground, which is no flooding in the area. As far as Sunday, or that last storm, I believe it got to be about six or eight inches. We did have shuttles working again by volunteers and stuff like that, to do it, we'll absolutely help out the best we can whenever we can, if, whenever we need it.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any other questions from the audience?
The shuttle was Thursday, I'm sorry.
Let's move back to the same question. We have this open-ended, weather-dependent to get anything done. Much more to hear some kind of a time commitment to saying, it will be done by this date. I'm gonna meet with the Conservation Commission at this date, we'll have a decision on this date. I'll be able to do and go work on this date. And right now, it's just a notice, there's nothing.
Unfortunately, due to the nature of the work that needs to be done, that's impossible.
May I make a suggestion, get four people with four shuttles and dig a trench.
There's a little more to it than that, but I would suggest, and Alec brought this up, I think it would be great to have a neighborhood liaison, even if it's not the go-to person for everything, at least speaking to the neighborhood, giving us the information, you know, the email list, something like that. So if you guys can get together and let us know who that's gonna be, that would be, that might help streamline communication as well. So, like I said, I wanna make sure the communication is open and everybody's getting all the information. And I think we're all on the same page on that, I can probably speak for everybody on that.
Can I just say, it has to be legitimate communication. I got an email one day stating that the road had started to flood, there were puddles on either side of the road at that time.
That's the day I went and checked, yeah.
It wasn't flooding at the time, so we need honest communication back and forth. You know, when it, when it gets above six inches, obviously we know that's a problem, and we'll work to have a shuttle.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't recall the date that was, but I remember getting that email, driving over directly to myself in that morning, and it was just on the side, which was, you know, I, I maybe the email was a, this is gonna happen type of email.
So, so that's part of the problem here, is that we don't know when the street's gonna flood. And so, it didn't flood on Thursday when there was transportation that was provided, but then it did flood on Sunday. How are we supposed to know when to?
So I think, I think what Mr. Unis was saying was that, if the street's flooded, then obviously an email, but if the street's not flooded, we shouldn't be getting an email saying the street's already flooded. You know what I'm saying? So I think, I think that's what he was getting at, because that email did say the street was flooded, I remember that.
We don't know when the street's gonna flood either, I mean, it handled one storm last week, fine. It handled the second storm last week, fine. The third storm, the river Fip was too high, and it didn't handle. Yesterday, I was driving to work and the torrentary had corrupted it, so, we don't know what's gonna happen upstream.
He had an email with Saturday.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Does anyone else have questions they wanna come up and ask? Alright, come on up.
Well, I don't want to walk there, I'm sorry, I'll just stand up. Paul, Paul, and Toona Island, and three Barrows Court, and my question about the shuttle service and everything, you know, that's great that we have an email list, we're all on it, but if we send that email to the, what do we call them, the manager, who's the?
The town manager?
No, no, who am I sending the email to?
The list of emails?
Yeah.
Yeah, to the town manager, and help us through the challenge.
But what if we send that email, it's on a weekend, say, oh, here comes the water, it's not gonna get looked at? I fill out Monday.
I can speak for myself, but I can also speak for other, I mean, I know we all check our email all the time, even though it's on the weekend, I check it myself too, and I know the fire department's always checking. Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, and, I mean, I don't think we should be using email for emergency situations, right? So if there's, if the road is flooded, and I couldn't hear the woman, I couldn't hear her name, I'm sorry, so, but, I think, if it's an emergency situation, then you contact the fire department, have gas, as sue it is. Maybe Mike can add some color to that, but, yeah, if it's an emergency situation, I wouldn't send an email, I'd make a phone call and get someone on the phone immediately. If there's flooding and you need to, and it's above six inches, or whatever it is, and it's getting impassable, then we need a phone call, not an email.
I know these guys are checking it too, when there's a potential for it, so I know that they're always sending somebody around there.
So would it be 911 call?
Yep, or you can call the business line if you'd like.
Okay, can that information be sent out to this email list?
Yep, I can, I can write it right on your email list.
And that we, if we didn't have that phone number, have that information, you know, easy for us to get it as our emails or text messages were given to you. I mean, you know, Mike, we need to get such a good job.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other questions? Alright, well, thank you all for coming, I appreciate it, and please, make sure you get together and get that email list together for us, and it would be preferential to get the phone list too, for everybody, just in case. And I would pick, personally, I would say, you know, pick a liaison for the neighborhood to be the go-between. It would help with communication.
Chairman, can you have a phone list?
Alright. I'm sorry, was there anything else from the board before I closed up this topic? Kevin, go ahead, since you're on.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to say, I think Alex's idea is, is a great idea to have a liaison in the neighborhood, and even if that person, and I know the gentleman came up before and had, you know, sort of his eyes on what was going on with the pipe, you know, that's, I don't think anybody wants to discount what anybody's saying as far as what could be other options or other issues that are occurring. So that liaison could really be that person who, you know, meets with the Highway Department, you know, and tries to figure out what the problem is. I just feel like, you know, the neighborhood has to be involved in this, I think, as much as possible to help our folks identify what the issue is in itself. So that liaison idea, I think, is really, really important, and, you know, it's, it's, people, I know people don't have a lot of time on their hands, and, you know, it's something else that someone's gonna have to do, but I think it really would be an effective way to help the situation, so, that's all.
Well said, Alec, did you wanna add something? What Kevin said, alright.
Still, I'll be Alec.
Oh, no.
Thank you for having us there. Alright, thank you, thank you everyone for coming, we appreciate it, and we all, speaking for the board, we all want the same time here. And as quickly as possible.
And Steve's, you know, mine, all of the things, you know, we have, we have three steam requests and that is the slight origin, you know, that is always something that is built.
Yeah, absolutely.
At this conversation, we are willing to continue this conversation as much as we can.
Alright, so, next up, we have a discussion on plans to address the open, oh, she's the director of planning.
So just to give you an update on where this whole thing has gone, so, when did you know in the summer? We had a mayor.
Hey, everybody, we're still in a meeting here, guys. Will you go out there? Yeah, can you let them know that we're, everyone, can we have conversations outside, we're still in the middle of a meeting? Go ahead.
So as you know, we had a planner that was hired in the summer, who then was able to use that to get a $32,000 raise and stayed where they were. We continue to advertise in the MMA publication, there's currently 26 planner positions advertised there. We advertise, it's 26 right now. We also keep advertising in the American Planning Association, Massachusetts chapter, to no avail. The contact is, planners in a pinch, who then responded back, that they had nobody right now. But we're asking them to keep us on the radar. And right now, what we've done is, Nick has agreed, that Nick is taking in all the zoning board applications, his office is managing that, and the Conservation Administrative Assistant is now helping out, doing minutes with planning, and I did have a good interview today with a planner, possible planner, and we're gonna talk again on Monday.
So you're not just leaving it open?
No.
That's the room around there, you just forgot about it, I didn't think that was a case.
We also reached out to a former member of the planning board, who retired from a town administrative position, and so, because I said I hear you. I said, so I hear you helping out in this town, why don't you come to your own hometown? I'm not getting stuck with that again, because he went there and the planner moved to New Hampshire, and he thought he was only gonna be part-time, and now he's the only person in the planning department in that town.
Would this be the same person that said, I don't want the chair position anymore?
Probably.
Yeah, okay.
So, hopefully, we get someone in there soon, and in the meantime, we'll go, the staff that are stepping up, I made Nick and Kathy and, you know, Megan for helping out.
I know Tim was gonna try to be on, I don't think he's on, obviously.
And we've also told Brian, Nick, myself, John Thomas, Chris, anything that comes in, any, any submitted to the planning board, to let us all know, we'll all come up, we'll go through everything, everyone will help, we'll go through everything to make sure everything's in order before it moves on, so.
Kevin, any questions? Laura, did you wanna say anything?
If you mind, please.
Of course. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, I have a radical idea. I don't know whether it's gonna work, but, we're at a point where drastic measures need to be taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're past that point, I think.
Yes, I have one for Kevin, if that would be possible, as long as Laura.
Laura, can I look at that for you, Parker, do you mind?
Yeah, no, 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 go ahead.
Thank you.
So Laura Parker, Four Island Drive, I'm even on the planning board, I've been on the planning board for two years. I have had a planner for six months of those two years, which isn't ideal for a new planning board member. I'm not a quitter, but I'm exhausted. It is a lot more difficult to prep for a meeting without a memo telling us specifically what we need to be aware of and things to consider. We're kind of flying blind to an extent, we're inefficient, our meetings are probably going way longer than the YouTube because we're talking about procedural things in the meeting that the planner would have sorted out way ahead. We're talking about things we probably don't even need to talk about. We're susceptible to errors in procedure and otherwise, and it can be a liability. Brian is doing a tremendous job, fabulous, I can't speak now highly, he needs more money.
I've said that quite a few.
Yeah, he doesn't have enough experience, unfortunately, and I'm relying on Tim as well as the most senior member of the select board, but unfortunately, you know, he's also a volunteer, I don't wanna burden him, I think I'm already a pain to him more than he'd like. But I have questions, and there's nobody to go to, so I was really glad to hear about Nick helping out as well with the zoning stuff. I had no idea there were 26 towns looking for a planner, and I think that even draws this suggestion as being more important, we're, we need drastic measures. So I had a suggestion, I have no idea if this is even allowed in municipal government, it would be what we do in corporate America. We normally need to incentivize applicants, we need to incentivize them to stay, because with 26 other towns looking for planners, you know, they may come for a year or less and say, this isn't worth it, and take the next best offer. So, this is drastic, I admit that, but I'm looking at, given the competition from the other towns, we've not had a planner for a full year. I would like to suggest taking a portion of that unpaid salary and benefits. I throw it a number, which you can see here, that would have been in order to the benefit of the full-time planner had we had one for the past year, so there's money in the budget, and towards offering a signing and a longevity bonus, using a scale that would pay them 20% at hiring, with the condition that if they leave within a year, they have to refund it. At the end of the second year of employment, I would like to give them, I forget the, sorry.
15.
No, it's 20, it's 30%, at the end of their second anniversary. Conditioned upon having provided two years of full-time service, they have to be employed still at the end of two years, and it is not eligible for prorating. If they leave anytime within year one and year two, they lose it. If they leave anytime within year one and year two, they lose it. At the end of year three, 50% of that bonus gets paid with the same conditions as year two. Again, I don't know whether this person would be union and whether a union contract would allow for it. I don't know if this is permissible under municipal government. It's a suggestion. It's radical. It costs us money, but we're desperate. I think we need it.
I, I like this.
It would certainly attract. Now, that being said, if the person that you're speaking with turns out to be great, make it a longevity bonus only.
I'm going to say this, if what I just saw was right, I would be all-in on that person. Yeah. I think, I think it's been quite a while. And I'm sure most of you know, I was on the planning board for quite a while. And I was with, I think it was Tabitha first was the planner and then Paul.
Yep.
And I was lucky enough to get on select board before we lost the planner. So I can't imagine how, even with the town planner, it was quite a while.
Two months into my tenure, we lost the planner. And the memo, you know, I didn't even know we were going to get memos. When the memos came in, I was like, this is going to be great. This is so much easier than I thought it was going to be. The learning curve is high. It's really high. And there are people, I'm like the third, no, fourth. So I'm seven. There are still three more people below me who have less tenure than I do, which means they had a planner for a month, maybe.
And it turns people off from volunteering to.
It does. Well, and I'm not calling attention to anybody in particular, but we had two seats up for renewal this year. And, you know, for reasons I'm not getting into and I'm not seeing it specifically because of this, but two people chose not to pull papers for those seats.
I was going to say, there's a good possibility that not having a planner in there, we spend more on legal than we would be spending on this. We have to.
Yeah.
Reach out more.
So what I was saying is, you know, I think your suggestion is fantastic. I mean, if it's feasible.
Yep.
Is that a union position?
It is a union.
So yeah, obviously, you're right. It would have to be through that.
And what the complications are, I don't know.
I think at this point, any incentives are.
Yes.
Are going to be.
And I think, honestly, I think it's probably even more important if we get somebody in there to make sure, you know, maybe there's a little stipend, there's a signing bonus, but the longevity bonus.
Give them a reason.
For multiple years is, yes, and make it worth their while in year three to stay.
Yeah.
Let's at least get a three-year job.
I'm 100% agree with that, yeah.
That'd be great.
Alex, do you think?
Thank you, Laura. It is, that's private sector 101.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if this is.
Throw money at the problem.
It's effective.
It works everywhere else. It is effective. But I don't know if it's legal, number one. Number two, you know, I'm more worried about slippery slope. Kind of, you know, in the future.
If you're doing it honestly.
We've done that for executive session.
We do have longevity for other commissions.
We absolutely do. Please provide longevity, you know, that this is, you know, an existential circumstance.
I think what you do is you have a salary range. Can you tell the person if you stick around next year, you'd get this? If you stick around the.
A higher bump, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that is, you know, a longevity thing is much better. The way, everybody's mobile nowadays. They use everywhere else for stepping stones to get to the next level. You know, we have to, as a town, be better with a contingency plan when this sort of stuff does happen. We're now implementing a contingency plan. We're lucky enough to have people like Nick and Megan Harrop and, you know, John that are stepping up to do it.
Yeah.
Thank God. Thank you, Nick.
And nobody could have predicted that 26 positions are open right now for the same.
I had no idea it was that many. That's just disheartening.
We have, we do have Tim, we do have Tim, the chair of the planning board on Zoom. Tim, did you want to say something? Can yours?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you all the time.
Thank you so much, Laura.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hadn't heard Laura's idea before. I like it from a conceptual standpoint. But yeah, just from a timeline perspective, we've been without a planner for 15 of the past 21 months, which is pretty staggering. The one thing that I would add, potentially just to supplement some of the work that is being shared amongst town staff, I don't know if there's the ability to have some resource available to Brian to help with some administrative side of things or some other solution to assist with just the day-to-day operations. I don't remember the last time we approved a set of minutes. So there's a significant backlog of all of that stuff to get through. A lot of that stuff is not something which necessarily needs planning training. But I think any and all support that we can give to Brian at this point, regardless of whether or not we get a planner in the door, and Mike, I'm glad to hear there was a promising discussion. I think there's a significant backlog of work, which means that the pressure would not let up on Brian for a significant period of time. But after somebody was brought up.
So, Tim, that brings up a great point. Actually, that's something I had in my notes to talk about too. Is there, is there any type of, Mr. Chairman, any type of admin support we can get? I mean, even if it's bringing a temp in to do some of that, just the paperwork to do.
Yeah, as I've said, for admin work, we have the conservation administrative assistant working on minutes. So that'll help Brian out. And I'll look at if there's always available from our other administrative assistant that does finance committee, maybe she can help out on student minutes. Just tackle them one at a time and get a movement.
But to.
Or just either the chat GPT or something. I don't know.
Yeah. I know that's, I'm sure that's coming. It's going to be out perfectly. Yeah.
Virtual planning, virtual planning director?
Just the minutes, yeah.
Also, just, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, you know, there's another aspect of this, of this job too, which is the economic development side of things too. So I know when I was on the EDC, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of really good stuff we'd love to do from the economic development standpoint thing, side of things as well. And it's extremely difficult without someone in that position. So I like Laura's idea as well. Anything we could do to, you know, try to get candidates or hopefully this candidate works out. I think any ideas, but yeah, this one we can say.
Excellent. Anything else, guys?
I love it. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Laura.
Thanks for considering.
Thank you, everybody. Oh, and Nick, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the day's worked, guys.
All right. Next up, we have, let's see. Discussion and vote on the request for extension of comprehensive permit for the property located at 253 Mansfield Avenue.
Just, I didn't know if you wanted to weigh in on that at all. That is the Foddy Bee, down at CrossFit, used to be, just being on in Albertos. They're looking for an extension in the zoning board. Just wanted to know if the select board had any preference on that.
Did the zoning board vote on it already?
What's that?
Did the zoning board vote on it already?
They voted on the Foddy Bee, yeah. They already approved it. They're looking for an extension.
They haven't, sorry, they haven't, they haven't voted on the extension. The applicant was in front of the zoning board on Monday at our most recent meeting.
Yeah.
But there was a miscommunication, so ultimately it got continued to next month's meeting. He's got a couple of months left on his approval, initial approval, but he's just looking to get ahead of it and get it extended. So there's no proposed modification to the plan as of now. It's literally just an extension request as the expiration date is coming up. And I think it's either June or July, we'll see what we do there. But we've got a couple of months that that's set to expire.
Do you need us to vote on it or should we just defer to the zoning board?
You can just let me know and I'll let the board know if you have any preference.
Any preference? Will they not just approve it, statute of law?
I'm personally okay approving it and this is just my opinion, as long as the zoning boards are okay with it.
Right. I was going to say, just make it contingent on the voting of the zoning boards.
Yes, yeah. Kevin, what do you think? Anything?
It's frozen.
Hello.
No, I'm good. No, I agree, yeah. As long as the, as long as the zoning board's okay with it. And we could, I guess we're, we could approve pending their approval on it.
What's that?
Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Say it again. Is that a motion? Is that a motion? Because I don't know. You can make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
All right, hang on. I will make a motion to. Hold on, I'm just getting the wording out here. All right, I'll make a motion to request an extension of the comprehensive permit for the property located at 253 Mansfield Avenue pending approval from the, is it zoning board appeals?
Yes, yeah.
One second.
There you go. There's your motion.
Sorry.
All right, motion and a second. Kevin?
Yes.
Tanis?
Yes.
Alan, yes, and I'm a yes. Not really sure what that's for, but yes. All right. So next up, we have a discussion, discussion on vote on posting meeting materials. Do you want to discuss this tonight or push it to the next meeting, Kevin? I know until you're in person, Kevin.
If we have a few minutes, I think it's, it's just something, you know, I haven't talked about this in a whole year, so I had to bring it up again. But, you know, we're in budget season again, obviously. And I had brought this up about a year ago just to try to put some requirements on what is available for meeting participants, for public meeting participants. For, especially when it comes to budget time, it's very difficult to participate as a citizen when you don't have the same materials that the boards do, whether it's, you know, whether it's select board or FinCom or any of the other boards. So I know what I had proposed way back a year, I think it was about a year ago, because it was budget season, was, you know, could we make, you know, obviously redacting information that was private? And could we, you know, make the meeting materials that we use for select board meetings and also for FinCom meetings, could we, you know, make that available on the town's website prior to the meeting? So folks could more actively participate. And I think it would be also, it would help with transparency of the town government. So that's why I wanted to put it forward again, you know, just, it happened again with me the other night. I was, I went to, you know, join the FinCom meeting and there were no materials available. So I had to kind of, I don't want to make fun of Mike again, but I will, you know, like Mike puts it up on the screen and it's super tiny and we try to, like, too much is for Mike to be. You know, trying to, trying to remind you. So, you know, so, you know, that's where, that's where the, you know, that's why I wanted to just talk about it again and just get the board's thoughts on it and see if there's a way, maybe we can find some, some way to just get some of these materials out there so folks can, can see them. And obviously, I think it would help with transparency, especially, you know, given the budget issue that happens. Especially.
Yeah, I know last time we talked about this, one of my concerns was, you know, some of the stuff, especially when it comes to permits and things, there's, you know, there's bank records and things like that. So to take the admin time to redact a lot of that stuff would kind of be unfeasible, in my opinion. But I do think that anything like budgets or, you know, maps, things like that that are not really need to be heavily redacted, I think I'm all for it. The hard thing is, we don't even get these till about 48 hours before the meetings anyways. So that's, that's a huge time crunch. And that's just my opinion on it. But I do think, and right now, we have a budget estimate here that would be helpful for everybody to see. So I definitely agree with you partially on it, yeah.
I agree. Well, I believe misinformation better. As a matter of fact, I think I, I couldn't go through the articles. There was one that was changed to something in our charter, maybe, or something like that. And I said, for the changes, see the town clerk. That shouldn't be the way we propose changes at town meeting. We should at least post them, if it's large and too large to include in the town meeting warrant, we should at least post them on the town website well beforehand, so we can see those changes in advance without having to submit formal requests to the town clerk.
What do you think, Alan?
I agree with you. The same reasons, the time and redacting. And for most, you know, it depends on, it depends on the packet. It depends on what's up. There's leases, there's, I don't know, the time is there for things of that nature. But as far as budgets, I 100% agree. Especially, you know, I mean, all the line items, all departments are going to have to submit everything. You know, there are breakdowns and the whole nine, yes. Is that, is that just a whole other level of it?
Yeah.
You know, I think, I think so, you know. And as far as budgets? Absolutely. 100%, 100% transparency. We always see it after the fact in a.
Yeah.
In the town report, we always get it after. So why not get a year's report? You know, everybody doesn't know these line items, I mean, especially the big number ones. You know, that's, I mean, can they be digital? They got to be digital somewhere, right?
Yeah.
You know, we. Or we have no problems about it. You can scan the budgets and put it up, you know, online.
But I mean, that's everywhere. Are we going to be able to get it from all departments?
Well, we get all the budgets. The problem is when you start posting stuff that isn't final.
Yeah.
And then that becomes confusion. People become confused. They say, what are you talking about? It was X amount of money. Well, that was before the budget was cut. Well, that was before.
I would even do something right across the middle, draft it right out.
Yeah, draft.
So that, so that everybody knows. And that was actually what I was thinking while you were saying that, is that we have proposed town meeting articles, and that's not the final version of this. So that's part of a packet, but it's something that we could discuss, change. So having that out there, people might take that printed from this meeting and bring it to the town meeting and be completely wrong about what's actually going to be on there. So even if we do put that stuff up, big draft right across the middle.
I agree. I'd rather have, I'd rather have an early draft version of something and be able to have an intelligent conversation and ask good questions than not have any information at all and winging it at the meeting and trying to scramble to figure out what, you know, what questions we need to ask here.
Yeah, especially when it comes to money, because that's, that's the biggest contention in town, you know, is funds. So I 100% agree with that, yeah. Kevin?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, I mean, we don't have to vote on it tonight. I mean, I, 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 you know, maybe it's, maybe it needs a little refining and conversation with, with Mike and Jen and all that. But if we're all at least on the same page, that we'd like to see, you know, we'd like to see some meeting materials, whether or not it's, I don't think it's got to be all through meeting too. But key meeting materials, you know, on the website available. You know, maybe, you know, I can, I can sit down with Mike and Jen and talk about, you know. I just, I don't want to zoom out to like 100,000 feet, but I just feel like there's got to be a way for us to be more transparent and more encouraging of people to participate, you know, by giving them more of the information that they need to participate. So I don't think we need to vote on it tonight, but, you know, maybe if Mike's, you know, amenable to it, sit down with Mike and maybe with Jen and just try to, based on this conversation with the rest, with all of you guys, you know, try to figure out a way to, to get something out there that's valuable, of course, but also, you know, I guess that transparent. So, you know, like I said, we don't have to take a vote on it now, so I'm glad to hear everybody is on the same page.
Yeah. Maybe could you make a list of what things we want to make exceptions for, right? At a few points, we see a lot of licenses, right? Maybe the application is okay, but the rest is.
Protect privacy.
Support all that, right?
I think Kevin, I think Kevin's hit it right on the head. I mean, sit down with Mike and Jen and see what's feasible and what's not. And come up with a list of what we think, I mean, I, again, I go back to the budget. I mean, this is something that for years, before I was on the select board, I always want to know what these numbers are. before I was on the select board, I always wanted to know what these numbers are, and like you said, you're relying on the screen, you gotta try to zoom it in, and it's, it's very difficult to follow along.
Yeah.
It turns, it turns people off from, from being involved.
Right.
Yeah, we want more people involved.
I don't know, the people that want to be involved, they're involved, the people that don't, it doesn't matter what you do. You know, you can have free coffee and donuts, and they're not gonna show up.
Mr. Chair.
There's good to hear. Are you?
Thank you. So I thought this was gonna be more of an argument. I'm thrilled to hear that you're all on board theoretically to some extent. I actually did do a bunch of stats, but I'm not even gonna bother to show them to you. I would just like to point out that Brian Carmichael is the admin for two different boards that are very paperwork and document intensive. And a single person is able to get all of those documents posted to the public in time for the meeting, every single meeting. So I would hope that with the select board having an admin, the town manager having an admin, that we might be able to achieve, I'll settle for budget, I'd like to see some things like the Elm Street presentation, things along those lines that are important to the public, things like that, and I completely understand the redaction comments. Would love to see that posted in advance of the meeting. Just, I'll run through some quick stats, I went through 35 towns. I picked the towns that were closest in size to us that have open town meeting and five select board members. Norton is the mean, we were hit right in the middle. Of those, 17 provide their full packet, and in some cases, they're not redacted. I looked at them, some of them are, but some of them are not. Four of them provide budget, town meeting articles, capital improvement plans, the fiber cap, forecasting, that type of thing. And then 14, including Norton, provides nothing. I also thought it would be important to point out, of those 35 towns, 31 of them are using the same website platform that we are. There is a capability of joining it, and I've seen it done. Some of them provide a second link, so the first link has the agenda, the second link has all the meeting materials. And in some cases, I saw one, it was 203 pages, but it's all digital.
That's an easy difference.
It is. So 31 of them are using Civic Plus, four, three of them have their own custom website, and one of them has another type of platform. But even then, some are using a link, some are using a, there seems to be some other separate area that you can go to for documentation, that's a little bit more robust on Civic Plus than we presently have to post agendas. Some of them put the links, under each agenda item, there's a link, you hit the link and you get those exact meeting materials on the web. And then one town uses a Google Drive. So there's, there's a bunch of ways to skin the cap. It can be done, if Brian can post two meetings worth, two boards' worth of meetings every single meeting, we can get it done, I know we can, thank you.
So I, I've already pointed it out to the presentation, that's, we got 10 or 15 pages of slides in here, that should be easy.
Yeah, I would love to, I'd love to have that.
And there should be a link under the meeting.
Well, I can't tell you how many times I've watched it on Zoom, I literally screen print, screenshot, 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 screenshot.
Or I did the same thing, I'm taking furious notes, trying to make sure it gets everything, yeah.
Just so I have it to refer to again at some point.
All right, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want another point to skin it out, or you got enough?
Do you want you to pump this up?
Well, no, I said, I'm gonna support Kevin, I'm gonna back the same thing they said, so if you have enough.
All right.
That's what we need to proceed.
So...
Wait, who was that?
That was, that was Rob.
Rob, well, she agreed with you, Kevin.
Thank you, I can't see you, so I, there was a voice out there, so I just wanted to know who it was.
I'd heard that.
All right, so nobody even answer me on this, but are there any other topics not reasonably anticipated? Good, okay. Next, we have all town managers report.
Slide 11, that one. So just to give you a budget update, the first page. The first page I showed you, just to go over some of that. So our revenue increase this year, the increment is $1,141,693. Our local receipts, our estimate is that they'll increase $188,224. So our total available is $1,329,917. So expense increases and revenue reductions, before we even start talking about budgets. Bristol County Retirement increased $229,38. Health Insurance, $354,327. Other insurances, $78,520. And then some reductions, overlay surplus, last year for the budget, we had $100,000. This year, the assessors said they're not able to supply any money, they're concerned about cases they may have. Last year, we used $1,235,536 of free cash. Stabilization, $707,500. New growth, $48,000. The free cash, we're using, proposing now is $700,000, last year we used $1,935,000. So the reduction, if we use $700,000, is $1,235,536. So the total reductions are $2,752,921. So we have revenue increase of $1,329,917. We have expense increases and revenue reductions of $2,752,200, $2,752,921. So a total revenue available is a negative $1,423,400, as opposed to last year. So if, if we look at different scenarios on the budget process, if the budgets were to increase 3%, we'd have a $2,016,639 deficit. If the budgets increased 4%, we'd have a $2,518,243 deficit. If the budgets increased 5%, $30,0327 deficit. And if we went with the department requests as submitted, we'd have a $5,583,29 deficit, for this year's budget. So if that all being said, right now, that would mean a reduction from what we appropriated FY '24 of $136,427 on the town side and $374,680 on the school side. That's not a reduction in the request, that's a reduction for FY '25 from what we received in FY '24. So I did meet with the superintendent today, and we went over all this information. And I told her that I would ask you tonight if you'd be willing, rather than have the joint meeting on Monday, the 25th, but to have it next Thursday. If you had a meeting on Thursday and the decision was to have an override, the deadline is that Friday to get it on the April now, like you had talked about before.
I was gonna say, didn't somebody have that idea a few weeks ago, and you got screened that for it?
Yeah.
Was that the end?
So, that deadline would be that Friday, so if you met next Thursday, joint meeting, go over this and decide what you want to do.
I'm, I'm fine with that, what do you guys? It's the 21st.
I'm fine with meeting Thursday, if we can get a more comprehensive budget look, I'd ask for it, each department, line by line.
We can get to that, but I don't understand what that benefits at this time.
Because I'd like to see the detail to be able to digest what's changing from year to year between these different departments. The, the big numbers, the big buckets is fantastic, I, I want to see what's changing year over year on each department line.
All right, Kevin, are you available next week?
Um, yes, I am, I am available next Thursday, yes.
All right. So, yeah, we don't have to vote on it, but yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let them know.
And Mike? And Mike?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Steve, through you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So can we get, aside from what Denise just asked for, which was sort of the detail of the budget, is it possible to get an idea of what we would be looking at for service reductions on the town side if, if we do not have, you know, if we're not able to get more revenue?
Yeah, okay, sure, we'll bring that.
Because, because I think, I think it's helpful to see, you know, that this is real, you know, these are real things that could be going away if we... You know, and the town will ultimately decide, but I think it would be good to see that at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, what do you have next?
Just on the cleanup day, Jared, and Joanne, Jen, Melissa, John, they've been working hard on developing a cleanup day, they want to stay away from the April vacation because they're looking to work with the schools to get some of the seniors that need community service hours to be involved. So right now, they're scheduled townwide cleanup day on Saturday, May 4th. Check-in will be at 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. and cleanup 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They felt that gets the teenagers there if they do it a little later. Hustlers people would rather get there at 8:00 in the morning and be done by 10:00.
Mike question is, do we get permission to restart the air?
So they're looking at, the DFW will get the bags. As was always done in the past, people will go around and collect trash, leave the bags in the trucks, and the highway will come around and pick them up. So they will have, they've got these...
The Uwoks.
So they'll get all the information on online registration, will be on the town website, and people can sign up to volunteer. So the way it usually works is you check in that morning, but a lot of times people will get in touch in advance and say, look, I want to do my street, I'll come get the bags on Friday, I'll just go out Saturday whenever I can and do it. So whatever people want to do.
Excellent.
And next is the town common damage. So you may have seen, I left a police report where it said the truck didn't, was not able to navigate the left-hand turn. I don't think they even tried a left-hand turn. I told Bob Kimmel, I said, so the traffic safety committee decided that was the best option for the driver to go straight through the common.
So we talked about that at traffic safety, it's true, the driver wasn't, and they reagived or anything, it was no, it was just asleep.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was about 2:00 in the morning or something like that. What should you be lucky if we paid him 50 bucks?
Took out the state sign, took out part of the fence.
A lot of the electrical too, right?
And the fall, they had all the electrical, all the electrical.
All the electrical?
Yeah, so fortunately, he did have good insurance, so safety insurance will be sending an adjuster out. And Jared's working on getting Bartlett out there to give a price on some of the work, and Cliff will work on the electrical work. And also we'll get a price on the fence repair, the insurance company. Just, if anyone's available on March 26th at 3:30, there'll be a walkthrough of the new town hall. We want to have it after, at 3:00, so most of the workers are gone, but they'll still be there, so.
Is that open to the public?
I don't think it is, unfortunately. No, it's, it's the permanent open committee of the select board, I believe.
Thank you.
So it's coming along good, I have pictures here of the work going on at the center and the town hall, if you want to look at them, but they're doing a great job on that.
So, so for select board report mail, I was gonna announce that I was gonna do office hours next week, but I guess we have a meeting.
You can do it, boy.
That's why, that's why we're doing it, so you know it now.
Yeah, I'll be by the flagpole at 3:00. Okay, anybody else have any?
Mr. Chairman, I do have something.
Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
Which is rare for the select board reported mail section. So Mike and I received an email earlier today from the chair of the Economic Development Commission, and this is, this is a good story. As Steve knows, we've been working for a little while on trying to get kind of a business community group together in Norton. And the EDC put together a flyer that they're going to be distributing to businesses where they can go in and scan, just scan a QR code, and then it takes them to a survey on the town website where they can sign up for a, to be part of a community group, a Norton business community. So more to come on that, but something that we've been trying to do for some time is to just get contact information for, for the business owners in town. So Steve, Steve and Alan, you should be getting it as well. And please sign up when you do get it.
So to tag onto that, I'm part of the Norton Business Association, we're going to be having, I don't have the date set right now, but we are gonna have a soft launch for, for recruiting new members, and I think we're gonna work in coordination with the EDC on that too, so as soon as we have that, we'll be in touch with them.
Yeah, good, good stuff and a positive, positive development. So we want to try to attract business to town, and we want to help businesses succeed, and both the Norton Business Association and the EDC working together, I think is pretty cool stuff, so.
All right, if there's nothing else, I approve the warrants as written. And my favorite motion of the evening?
Make the motion to adjourn?
Sure. All right, ah, Kevin?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I, yes, thank you, guys, thank you, everybody, thank you.